Welcome everyone. I'll call this September 23rd, 2025 meeting of Council to order at 5:30 PM. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of Council, staff, and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notice is hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001 and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to this meeting as if everyone was attending in person, and if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed. So I'd ask everyone that can to rise for the National Anthem. We acknowledge that we are being hosted on the ancestral lands of the Haudenosaunee, Mississauga, and Omamawinnee people. We acknowledge and welcome the presence of all indigenous people, including the Métis, Inuit, and other First Nations from across this vast land who also makes this place home. The lands we are on today are recognized in the Two-Row-Wampum Dish with One Spoon Treaty, Treaty 27, and the Crawford Purchase. Okay, so the first item up, Council, is the confirmation of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Townend? Seconded by, Councilor Budrick. Call the question. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Sorry. Oh, yes.
Yes. Council, may I ask you to amend the Council agenda today to consider a bylaw to appoint your new treasurer?
So that would be, uh... Item...
So the motion would read that the agenda for the September 23rd meeting of Council be confirmed as amended to add bylaw 2025-58 to appoint David Classy as treasurer for Loyalist Township.
Okay. I'm happy to make that motion.
Amended? Thank you. So moved? And okay with the seconded? Call the question. All in favor, motion has passed. Thank you for catching me on that. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof for open session this evening? Seeing none? The next is a motion to move into closed session. Do we have a mover? Deputy Mayor Townend?
I move that Council now move into closed session to consider a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to negotiations, provincial loan negotiations pursuant to Section 239.2K of the Municipal Act.
So moved? Seconded by, Councilor Budrick. All in favor, motion has passed. so we're reconvening now into open session. So I'll just rise and report that during the closed session, Council provided direction to staff regarding negotiations. council provided direction to staff regarding negotiations, re the provincial loan negotiations. And the next item on our agenda is open forum. Just before we do that, I would just like to note that we are two councillors short this evening. Councillor Ennis and councillor Parks have sent their regrets and are unable to attend the meeting this evening. So under open forum, the first or 15 minutes of the meeting is set aside for open forum. Any individual may address council regarding an item on the agenda, excluding matters under the statutory public meetings section on the same agenda. Each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register and we do have two entries on the registered. They're registered in advance. And I also will call in chambers if anyone that did not sign up wishes to speak. And I will call within the virtual audience. If anyone wishes to speak, to use the raised hand so you can be brought into the meeting. So with that, we will go to our register first. Tim and Gina Alexander. So if you wish, if you just come up to where the mic is, you can have a seat. Just there's a, I call it a purplish color button. If you just push that, it will light up. And if you, if you do that, then the virtual audience can hear your presentation as well. Yep. Okay.
We're concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Okay. So please proceed.
Okay. Is this area not a protected forest anymore? We were told by one of the former supervisors of Loyalist that it was a protected forest. And that's why originally the solar was shut down.
Years ago.
Yeah, this was a few years ago.
I keep that, that's, I don't keep, if you don't mind going.
Okay.
There's three minutes, so I just, if you could keep going, you'll be able to grasp as much as you can.
Okay. And we heard that the previous solar farm interested in the same land moved away from this site because of the delicate ecosystem. So technically, we could have two solar farms, like 500 metres apart.
One south of us, one behind us.
Yeah, like we're the property directly in the middle of this fiasco. So it's going to be on all sides of us. We were never once informed from Westbridge, anything that was going to happen. We were out running one morning and we saw the billboard put up, clearly showing us trapped in a 53 acres.
The eight foot fences.
With eight foot fences, the deer population will be gone. Probably onto 401. There's going to be fatalities, collisions.
Major deer.
It's a major deer yard for the winter. We do have pictures of that when there's like 75 plus deer in the field, plus the number that we have behind our home. And we were concerned with the old dump that is west of us. No one seems to know who owns it. Apparently, is it Selene's?
Dumped there.
Dumped there years ago, so we're concerned with what could be there. You know, where things are dug up. That kind of thing. And we'd like to know what percent of mature forest is still standing in Loyalist Township. No one seems to be able to answer that either.
Not much.
No, no. We did catch a dumper on our road, to say the least. It's gone on for years where this person would dump liquid of some sort. He always wore rubber gloves.
There's the rubber gloves we picked up.
And it was basically just to the west of our property line.
To the old dump.
To the old dump. And we caught him numerous times. No idea what was in it, the container of liquid. But obviously, when he was wearing gloves, it must have been something a little serious, we think.
And he was a doctor.
Yes. We found on him, yeah. We have his licence plate number and we found who it was. We have his gloves collected. So we don't know.
He dumped on road allowance plus 800 acres. So how do we find out what that is?
You know, if it's contaminated the soil, the water, we don't know.
Police didn't care. This environment didn't really come back to us.
This
Nope.
That's basically it, I think. Like I know Wesper said that they will, when the project is finished, that they kind of restore what they can, but there's no way
mature forest like that.
For forest can be.
There's not many in this township anyways. That's what I'm saying, like, there's lots of scrubland on this property too. Keep it in the scrubland. You don't need to wipe out the hardwoods.
And the two creeks, like we have a spring creek directly behind our house. Am I over my time? And Little Creek goes directly into Big Creek that in turn goes to the Bay of Queenie. So if anything happens.
Both of them are mainly protected creeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
From the catastrophic town, conservationary.
Conservationers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's what we're concerned about.
Think about before you let them destroy it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have Margaret McKenna. The light's already on, so if you don't mind having a seat and provide us with your information.
Good evening. My name is Margaret McKenna. I'm the chief operating officer of Westbridge Renewable Energy Corp. And the vice president of SwitzerVille Solar Inc., the developer of the 220 megawatt solar project that we are proposing here in Loyalist Township. I'd like to thank members of council, Mayor Hagedorn, planning and engineering staff, the community and other stakeholders for the time they have taken to provide feedback on this project. During consultation, we've heard positive. We've heard negative and we've heard constructive. We believe most of that can be incorporated, mitigated or overcome in future planning and design. Should the project, of course, receive your support and be successful in the ISO's LT2 procurement. There is work to be done still and we acknowledge that. We believe that the project will have a positive impact on the community and the township as a whole, while also contributing clean emission free energy to support Ontario's future. I respectfully request that council here today vote in favour of the resolution before you to provide support to the SwitzerVille Solar Project. I appreciate your time and thank you. I'm actually sorry, if I could, I could just briefly respond to one thing Mr. and Mrs. Alexander mentioned in relation to the dumping. Just to be clear, we don't have any knowledge of or anything to do whatsoever with that. And so I just wanted to ensure that that was clear.
With the person that was dumping on the
Yes, we, we don't, unfortunate circumstance, but I just, we, I wanted to make sure that wasn't.
It's unrelated to the project?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And I'll just note when it comes time before the, when that item comes up on the agenda, staff will be coming and, and giving a bit of an update. And I saw them writing when you were presenting. So there are opportunities still to be able to address some of these as well. So we'll, it's not being ignored. It's just the experts were making notes and, and taking it down and we have heard it. Thank you. So with that, there's one more on here to speak that signed up, but you're actually a delegation. So you'll come just after this. So just hang tight and we'll get to you. And so I will just ask if there's anyone else within chambers that wishes to speak this evening under open forum. If none, I will ask if there's anyone in the virtual audience that wishes to speak to council this evening under open forum. To please use the raised hand feature so we know to bring you into the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, there's no one in the virtual audience looking to speak.
No one. Thank you. So that concludes open forum. And now I will, we're at delegation, so please come forward. As your, as is the vice president of Hydrostore, am I correct? Yes. So let me just make sure that he's got the mic close enough to the computer or pull the computer over.
I was told it's already.
Yeah. So
there you go. Perfect.
So just so that everyone can see it, what we'll have you do is actually share it through Zoom. Just go right here. Make it full screen.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you for being patient with me as I get oriented here. Good evening, your worship councillors. First of all, thank you to yourselves and all the members of staff for having us today as well as the audience and hearing us out. To introduce myself, my name is Shahir Ziz and I'm one of the vice presidents of business development for a company called Hydrostore. Today, I'm here today to introduce both our organisation, our technology, as well as introduce a new project to your township called the Quinty Energy Storage Centre, which we'll talk about later today, proposed to be developed in Loyalist Township. To kick off, Hydrostore is a Canadian company based out of Toronto, Ontario, which has been around for about 15 years. We specialise in the development of long duration energy storage projects. So you may be familiar with energy storage, which is typically considered batteries that come online on the electricity grid for four to six hours, sometimes even more. Our technology is advanced compressor energy storage. So it's not a battery storage, but rather using air, rock and water as a form of energy storage. Technology's actually been around since the 1960s, but our company Hydrostore has innovated it to make it emissions free and adaptable for today's environment. Our company today spans over 100 employees and has raised over $500 million of capital from Goldman Sachs, the Canada Growth Fund and the Canadian Pension Plan. We have two pro, one project operating in Ontario, in Godrich, Ontario, which uses our technology and the innovations that we made, as well as two projects in late stage development, one in Australia, which we'll talk about later today, as well as one in California. And our pipeline of projects beyond those initial two projects includes a project in Ontario, which is the purpose of our meeting today is to really introduce council to that project and give them background of what we've been working on. Also, I might have missed this, but my colleague Lucas Texan is also on the Zoom call. He's one of our primary engineers and he'll be here to answer any questions you might have a little bit later on. So to talk a little bit about what we do as an organisation, our technology focuses on long duration energy storage. Long duration energy storage is energy storage that provides eight plus hours of duration. This is really important for the electricity grid because it means when there's issues, issues on the electricity grid that go beyond one or two or three or four hours, long duration energy storage can kick in and provide that reliability that our electricity system really needs. The form of technology we're using advanced compressor energy storage. This has been a technology that's been around since the 60s and really uses conventional technologies such as turbines and compressors to use them in a way that's for energy storage. Our duration, as I mentioned, is eight plus hours. Our technology can also be flexibly located, which means it can be located in areas where the grid needs it the most. That helps grid operators and also provides reliability for, for the province and the state we're operating in. Our technology is one of the lowest cost long duration energy storage technologies available today and it operates emissions free. What else is also really unique about our technology is that it has a 50 year plus operating life without any degradation. That's really helpful because it means that we aren't repeatedly refurbishing our, our, our storage project. And instead, it operates like any other, you could compare it to a pump storage plant, which is online for 5000 years and doesn't require any major replacements. The way our technology works is that you take electricity from the grid when power is cheap or in, or in excess. You use that to compress air underground into an underground cavern. During that process, as you are compressing air, we actually take heat and we store it into a thermal management system that heat is being generated when you're compressing air underground. Once the system is fully charged, the air pushes all the water that you see in this underground cavern out of the, uh, out of the cavern and holds, holds in steady, steady state. When you then need to discharge your, to generate electricity, you flip a valve. The water pushes the air out, the air goes up our well and through our turbine generating electricity. So essentially what we're doing is we're literally taking air, we're compressing it underground into a cavern when power is cheap. When power is expensive and needed by the electricity grid, we flip a valve, the air goes out and it generates electricity. Again, this process has been around since the 60s. We've just innovated it as an organisation to today's environment and have been able to successfully use it to contract with some of the world's leading utilities globally. As I mentioned, we have two advanced projects under development today. Our Silver City project is a 200 megawatt project located in the town of Broken Hill in New South Wales, Australia. This project is contracted with TransGrid, which is one of Australia's largest utilities to provide backup power to the town when the power lines go down. Additionally, it has also been contracted by the government of New South Wales in order to provide, to provide a reliability capacity i- i- in, in the, in the state. This project is going to start construction sometime next year and will be operating by the end of 2028, early 2029. Our second project is a 500, sorry, I should add. The initial Silver City project has also received all of its permitting approvals that are required in, in, in New South Wales. Our second project, the Willow Rock project, is a 500 megawatt, eight hour long duration project in Kern County, California. This project has also been contracted to, to utilities in, in California, including with 3CE. And in addition to that, it, it has also received its permitting approvals in, 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 in California. So both projects have showed that they have a pathway to permitting and a pathway to commercial, commercial operation a- as they have proceeded. Today though, we are here to talk to you about the Quinty Energy Storage Centre. The Quinty Energy Storage Centre is a, is a energy storage project that we have been working on for, for the, for the past, past couple of years in Lennox and Addington County. The reason why we are so attracted to this location is that we want to be adjacent to the Lennox Transformer Station, which is a critical transformer station in the province of Ontario. It allows for power to transfer east towards Ottawa, as well as transferring power west towards Toronto when needed. It provides a really, really good location on the grid and hence our attraction to this area. We've been working on two sites in, 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 in this area. With one of the sites we call, we'd like to call Quinty East, located on an industrial aggregate site in Loyalist. Today, we have been able to screen the site from a desktop environmental screening perspective, as well as conduct studies to understand the interconnection capacity and start to move ahead with some of the feasibility and development of, of the site. We have also partnered with the Mohawks of the Bay of Quinty, who are our First Nation Indigenous partners for the project and will be, are supporting us on, on our journey ahead. Additionally, there's a second site in, in Greater Napanee, where you, where you may have already heard of us also developing a site. We've also advanced on that site with studies, as well as including a borehole program to validate the geology of that, 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 that site. Both sites have been moving forward for us to proceed into potentially a, a procurement by the, by, by the Ontario government to occur next year, which I'll jump into shortly. So just before I get into the procurement, just wanted to highlight to you the location of the, of the project in, for Quinty East. So as you can see, the, the location of the site, proposed site is on the northern end of an existing quarry in, in Loyalist. So why are we doing all of this? Well, you may have heard from many, many of my peers in industry who've been focusing on a procurement called long term two or LT2 for solar, wind and some ba- ba- battery storage and natural gas. Our focus is actually on a different procurement that the ISO is holding called the long lead time procurement or LLT. The long lead time procurement is a six to thousand, probably is going to end up being six to 800 megawatt per The Long Lead Time Procurement is a six-to-thousand, probably is going to end up being six-to-eight-hundred megawatt procurement, specifically focusing on eight-hour-plus long-duration storage technologies, which also require a long lead time, so they require up to five years to come online. The procurement will also focus on hydro resources, but that isn't applicable to us directly. What's important to us is the long-duration energy storage. Though, that RFP is going to open up sometime next year, we believe sometime in the second half of next year now is what we've learned as late as last week, and that the project will be operational by twenty thirty-four. The contract term for that procurement will be about forty years, and we believe our project is going to be highly competitive in the long, long lead time procurement next year. So what makes Quinty Energy Storage special from an economic perspective is that our technology is not like standard storage technology which gets made in other countries or other areas and plopped into place. We are a long-term infrastructure project. What that means is that we actually need to be constructed onsite and on the ground, which is really good for boosting local economy as well as regional economy. Our project will create approximately six-hundred-and-seventy full-time construction jobs, as well as forty jobs once it's actually operating. And what's really exciting about these jobs is that these job opportunities, once operating, are not, you know, jobs that need to come away from, take away from any industry, but rather repurposing jobs that come out of the fossil fuel generation space. We're also going to be generating approximately one-point-four billion in support of Canada's GDP and also once operating about thirty-one million dollars per year in GDP. We're going to be driving local benefits to both the local indigenous communities, as well as working with your township to see what opportunities for our project to really work and contribute to the community. We've also been started engagement with Loyalist's town planning, planning team and who have, who've guided us towards your requirements for community engagement and a pathway towards municipal support resolution. And so we will be engaging, following Loyalist's requirements and doing our best efforts to engage with the community and proceeding ahead with that as we, as we look to move forward. And that is everything for me today. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, any questions or comments? The presenter, Counsel Willis.
Thank you through your worship. Thank you for your presentation. It's a really interesting technology. The two projects that you showed in Australia and California look like they're built in desert. Our area is cursed and limestone is, how will you address concerns that I'm sure will come up from local farmers about their groundwater and how it might be affected by this project?
That's a, that's a really good question. Maybe I'll take a first crack at it, Lucas, if you want to, if you want to jump in. So our cavern is actually six-to-eight-hundred meters underground, so it's far below the depth of of any groundwater, which is usually in the fifty, sixty, even maybe up to a hundred-meter sort of range. So we actually don't interact with local groundwater as we're constructing or when we're operating. And so what we do is we follow specific cavern construction philosophies and policies, which solely protect especially through that fifty-hundred-meter area where the groundwater it could be available, and then we go down to the depth where, in which there is no real interaction with with the local groundwater. I know, Lucas, if I butchered that, if you want to, if you want to jump in.
No, that was accurate, Shaheer. You know, we cite our cavern specifically to be in very impermeable rock formations that are not suitable for hosting water. It's one of our sighting criteria. The rock that is in this area is excellent for that case. It has very low hydraulic permeability once you're below the karst formation, below that limestone and into the Canadian Shield, which is where we would target to build our caverns. Our construction shafts, which which will travel from the surface down, down to our cavern construction horizon, are cased with the steel casing to ensure there's no interaction between our A case process and the groundwater.
Through your worship. Thank you for that. I just do suggest that you be prepared because people are not going to ask only about that, but they're going to want to understand what's happening during the construction phase.
Absolutely.
As well. Thank you.
No, thank you, Counselor. We will definitely take that into account.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Pradrik.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, too. And again, thanks for the presentation. Just for a non-engineer type, you mentioned five-hundred megawatts. Can you put that in perspective as to how many houses that might power over, let's say, a certain timeframe?
That is a really good question that I don't have an answer to off the, off the top of my head. I want to say probably a few thousand houses, but don't quote me on that. I will definitely get you a better answer.
I was going to say, maybe that's something you could.
We'll get back to you on that.
Okay, and if I just continue with one, I like the idea that you're mentioning an industrial aggregate site. So was that site in use or is it abandoned? Like, I think it's a good use of a site because, you know, there's not much you can do with an abandoned aggregate site, but maybe just a comment on that?
Yeah, no, we were, we were definitely intentional with our, with our choice of site. It is currently not being used for any aggregate purposes at this time. So it is kind of just, you know, being utilized by the company in their current state. And so we we want to make use of that land to the best of our abilities until eventually one day the quarry can use that land.
Any other questions or comments this evening? None. Thank you very much for the presentation, and it's quite an intriguing operation. It certainly piqued my interest when I first became aware of it, and I did go back and research the other sites to try and familiarize myself a little more. And so thank you so much for bringing it forward this evening. So Counsel, we do have a recommendation before us. Would someone like to present a motion? Counsel Willis?
I move that the delegation from Shaheer Aziz, Vice President and Nuri Green Grimes, Senior Manager regarding the Hydro Star and the Quinty Energy Storage Centre be received.
So moved, seconded by Counsel Pradrik. Any comments from the mover?
None, except I apologize. It's Hydro Store.
And any comments from the second or other members? Call the question home. Favor. Motion is passed. Thank you very much. And the first item under Items for Consideration is a Municipal Support Resolution Request for the Switzerville Solar Project. We have staff coming forward. Welcome. You want to just go ahead and proceed whenever you're ready?
Yes, through your worship. Not too much to, in addition to what's already outlined in the report, but I did just want to note a couple additional items, one being, the first being in regards to public engagement. In the report, we did outline all the engagement requirements that were abided by. However, I also wanted to note that the proponent did provide emails to all the residents that did sign their contact list at the open house advising them that council was considering this part resolution tonight and provided a link to where you can access the council agenda and staff report, so they were made aware that that would come forward tonight. Residents were also informed that their comment and responses to all the comments that they've heard was also posted on their website so that they knew how to access that information. And then the last piece I wanted to highlight as well is that the municipal support resolution being requested does not give approval for the project. It does allow the proponent to satisfy the IESO, so it's the Independent Electricity System Operator's Requirements, to make a submission to them as part of the procurement. But if the proponent was successful in obtaining a support resolution from council and subsequently contract from the IESO, they would have to come back to the township to apply for a zoning bylaw amendment application as the use is currently not permitted today on the site, as well as site plan approval and any associated building permits after that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Willis, do you have a question for clarification? Please proceed.
Your worship. So if the project gets IESO approval and they have to come to us for zoning variance and all of that, if the township declines to approve those things, would that go to the OLT to be appealed then?
Yes, through your worship, too, Counselor Willis. The, if, if the proponent, if that was denied through the Planning Act applications by council and the proponent would have the right to make an appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal, and they would base it obviously on the requirements in our official plan and provincial planning statement on whether they had an argument on that, on that appeal or not, that they would have the right to appeal that decision, yes.
Yes.
During the approval process, there is an environmental assessment as well because the members of the public that spoke raised some issues about birds and fish and things like that. Is that all part of the environmental assessment that gets done?
Yes, through you, as part of the planning application, we would require an environmental impact assessment on that property. There is environmental protection lands going through the property, traversing the property through the water cores. So that would be a requirement. We would, where they would have to dress everything on species-at-risk habitat, wildlife habitat, all of that would have to be looked at by an ecologist, and the township uses a third-party peer reviewer to evaluate that as well, determine if there's impacts and to help form how any development can occur on the site without negatively impacting any natural heritage features and their ecological functions.
Yes.
Thank you through your worship. There was also a comment about the forest that's on the property and the trees and things. Do we have any say in trees in how the design of the project is to eliminate or reduce the impact on the mature trees?
That doesn't mean that an ecologist can't come out on site and deem that they do meet that criteria, and then that would have to be considered in terms of impacts to that overall significant woodland patch and how things could be, reduce any impacts. They tend to also be related to the wildlife and other connections as as well. That would all have to be considered, and we would rely on the ecologist's recommendations.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience, through your worship. The members of the public that spoke also talked about past projects being denied on this land. Do staff have any history on that? Is that something that's happened within your time with the township?
Okay. Any other questions for clarification this evening? Saying, saying none. Just one final one. The other item, and I believe it's already been covered, but I just want to specifically address it. The deer yard that was mentioned that there's, they believe there's a deer yard there. That would be a part of the environmental assessment as well when they're dealing with wildlife and all of that, if if there is a deer yard on the site and if there was any protection that was needed.
Yes, through, through, through you, yeah, my understanding that would be part of like significant wildlife habitat that would have to be considered, so they would observe that if they were on the property. We've also been made aware of it through this process, so we keep those notes in our planning files, like for this particular project, that these types of things we relay back to the ecologists as well before they begin their work.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That's all the questions for clarification. I would ask for a motion. Do we have the motion that we could put up on the screen? It's a rather lengthy and wordy one. Do I have a mover for the motion? Deputy Mayor Townen?
Motion to receive and adopt.
Receive and adopt. Number two. So moved, seconded by Counsel Pradrik. Any comments from the mover? No, that's fine. So any further comments?
Just again, to thank staff for some of the added clarification to draw attention to the second resolution clause number six. You know, the resolution's sole purpose is to satisfy the mandatory requirements. I think everybody's heard on the basis of questions from council as well that there are some concerns. The proponent recognized that there is homework yet to be done, and I think there's a recognition that council wants to ensure that that homework is done. And, and I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, thank you, your worship. We've been down this road before, and I think back early in our term of council, we asked staff to develop a policy in terms of engagement, and they followed that rather extensively. You know, clean energy, it, in my judgment, that's the direction we should be taking. It fits into our climate action plan, and there will be an environmental assessment done. And again, one of the major things in our township, it doesn't use up any prime agricultural lands in our township, so just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Counsel Willis?
I do feel for the Alexanders because I do know what it's like to live within a project space, and I do encourage you to engage with staff and engage with the proponents so that it's, it's at least left, leaving you in a livable situation. Although, you know, I am supporting the motion because I do agree that we do have to do our part to move forward with green energy in the township, so I am supporting the motion, and I hope that it works out for you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Back to the mover for final. Call the question. In favor, motion is passed. Thank you. The next item is development of municipal land in the Hammersfield West Secondary Plan. And I will just mention to the, in the audience, the audience attendees, we understand, if you want to stay and see the rest of the council meeting, by all means, stay. I do understand that the sun is still up and there may be other things to do. We fully understand. So with that, we will move ahead to item eleven point two and welcome this evening. Do you have anything additional to share this evening? Very good. Okay, so counsel, I'll just ask if there's any questions for clarification? Okay, so council, I'll just ask if there's any questions for clarification before we proceed to a motion. Seeing none, we do have a recommendation before us. Would someone like to present a motion? Councillor Willis?
Move that the report from the Economic Growth and Community Development Services dated September twenty third, twenty twenty five, regarding development of municipal land in the Amherstview West Secondary Plan be received. And two, that council directs staff to undertake a feasibility study that identifies and assesses options for the township to dispose of the portion of the secondary planned lands owned by the township to optimize development planning and land use in the area.
So moved seconded by councillor Budrick. Any comments from the mover? Seconder, other members? Call the question. In favor, motion has passed. Thank you. And next up is a motion to move into the committee of the whole councillor. Move that council now resolve into the committee of the whole, seconded by deputy mayor Townen. All in favor? Motion.
I call committee of the whole to order at six forty two. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? General nature, seeing none. Items for consideration amendments to the council remuneration and expense policy. And our director, our manager of human resources is with us. Over to you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you through you, Chair. We're bringing forward this policy for consideration by the committee to seek feedback on the council remuneration policy. This was brought up as part of our compensation review that we undertook last year with a consultant as well as it's been five years since this policy has been updated. So it is timely before the next election to update this and make any amendments that are applicable. The reason for bringing this forward is to put in some of those things that were recommended by the consultant as part of the compensation review, but also this policy is ambiguous in some areas. Practices have evolved in those five years since the last policy was approved. And we're seeking some clarity and we want the the policy to be as clear as possible for administration. So I'm open to any questions about the contents.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. So I'll turn to the committee for just general questions about the policy and about the report, and then perhaps we can just kind of go through it in a in a systematic way. So any initial questions? You look like you're itching, councillor Proderick.
It's a comment slash question.
That's fine. Committee of the whole.
I just, you know, glancing over at the one thing that the one section on remuneration missed meetings. We have a, I think a policy that says this sec, in practice, this section has not been used and I'm just wondering, you know, if we're not using it, is it a bad policy or is it the fact that it's just never been used? And like, I think it's, I I like the idea that, you know, you miss so many meetings. I don't know if two is the right number, but just maybe some clarification on that or comparison to any similar you know, sized municipalities.
Any other initial questions, councillor Willis?
Hasn't been comfor enforced because there hasn't been an issue with attendance?
Other questions? Not in general. Okay, well then, yeah, we're gonna go through the chart. Oh, yep, councillor Budrick.
A comment, a comment to that through you. With today's technology, there's really, it's tough when you miss a meeting. I mean, I've done meetings from all over Canada, traveling for work, so. Good thing, look at that.
All right, well. We will get there. So let's go through the chart that's before us. And we'll start with the first remuneration compensation philosophy. There is some recommendation in there that refers to ultimately to what we discussed with our consultants. So councillor Proderick, you want to comment on?
I think I think to be fair, we did discuss that and we sort of come to an agreement. We put it off and make a decision this council for the next council. And I think that's fair. Fair way to go at it and, you know, the public can pass judgment based maybe on that issue. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
I I agree with councillor Proderick. I also think that we do have to. Although we don't get into this necessarily for the, none of us are getting rich doing this, but having said that, we do have to compensate at a rate that does make it appealing to someone that might be sitting on the fence and could be a very good council member. We want to make sure that they're able to justify coming, being here and if they're taking time off work or whatever, to be able to do the do the do this job that they are being adequately compensated so that they feel confident to put their name forward.
So I'm seeing consensus around that, Ms. Wood. So the second one, compensation administration. This is for revising for clarity. So council remuneration should be increased annually with the same economic adjustment provided to non-union group of employees again. Councillor Willis?
It may be splitting hairs, but I have a concern about this one because it puts us in a conflict. Because council does approve the non-union increases each year and would therefore be giving ourselves a raise and we'd be. I just wonder if we're not setting ourselves up for a bit of a conflict in that one.
Ms. Wood is poised to address that.
You could see it that way, perhaps, but this is a practice in most municipalities where they mirror some sort of cost of living that is given to staff members. Our cost of living figures that we bring forward for non-union are based on, you know, our an average or we review what we've given our unions, our comparators that we used in the study as well as C P I. So it's a solid number with justification behind it that is presented to council as part of the non-union compensation. So it's not a number that's just derived from the out of the air. So there is some background as to why we would be proposing the number we do for the non-union review or sorry, compensation.
Does that satisfy you, councillor Willis? Others on that? Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Just to reiterate, this is a standard practice in a lot of other municipalities or counties. And there hasn't been a problem with it being a conflict. And I think for all the reasons that has been shared here.
I think you've got consensus around that, Ms. Wood. So now we come to the missed meetings piece. We can have a bit more of a wholesome discussion around this. Again, the existing policy which contains penalties has essentially not been applied. And so staff are looking for clarity about what we want to do. If we're not going to apply it, should probably remove it. But what are what are the committee's wishes? Councillor Proderick?
I'm just gonna extend what councillor Budrick was saying that, you know, in the age of technology, we should be able to get to most meetings. And I know my own. I guess my own being says I've got to get to every meeting I can. That's why I was elected. And I do think that this policy needs to be enforced. I don't know, like I said in the preamble, I don't know if two is the right number, but when you factor in the fact that councillor Budrick, you know, technology, he takes advantage of it. And I don't say that in a negative way. He makes the commitment that, you know, in a year, we would have at least, if my math tells me correctly, about twenty four regular council meetings that I think you know, that's twenty four days that we all know they're coming. It's not a surprise. And there's going to be extenuating circumstances that it allows to be dealt with through council. So I would strongly suggest that we keep that in and enforce it. I'll leave it at that.
So I actually have a question on that. I'm agnostic at this point in my own personal opinion about whether we enforce it, but my question is about what what in our in our, what is the definition of absences approved by council? Is that the implicit approval of when the mayor announces that that councillors have sent regrets, council implicitly gives their approval for the absence? Like, what's the definition of that?
I believe that's what we are seeking clarity on. So, you know, to that point is illness, you know, if they, you know, call in sick. I guess that it is very ambiguous right now on what is the exemption that is approved by council. You know, obviously people have things come up, bereavement leave, all sorts of those things that come up, emergency leave. You know, there's protected leaves, you know, pregnant parental leave, all of those things, but there is other, you know, if you call them non-excused absences, I'm not sure how you would qualify that and who makes the determination again on that. So that's what we're seeking the clarity on.
Okay, well, let's have a discussion about that. Mr. Mayor, you had something you wanted to say upfront?
Just on that topic, there is a list of acceptable reasons for not being to work for employees. Could that relay over to this as? And what I'm thinking is, you know, maternity leave, bereavement, things like that. As you, as you were going through them, I'm thinking, yes, that does make sense. So is there any reason we couldn't just go through that list and see what would apply to council? Maybe all of them may not apply to council, but some of them very well may. And that could be a good starting point.
Yes, we could definitely look at a list of typical absences that staff members have and how we treat those. It would be a bit different in that, you know, a lot of time off staff have entitlements to take those, such as vacation, sick leave, you know, all sorts of things like that. So but we can definitely come up with a list that council could consider as excused absences.
What I was gonna say is, again, I'm thinking about process rather than necessarily the content of the process, because the process as it is now, most, most members of council, when they give their regrets, they give it to the head of council. So as far as I'm concerned, in terms of, I'm putting pressure on the mayor here, but that's because he gets paid the big bucks. I'm content for the head of council to be the gatekeeper if he has a list in front of him of what acceptable absences look like to protect himself from any accusations that he was unfairly adjudicating. But, you know, if if he had something in front of him, members of council expressed to him their regrets and their reasons for it, and he's satisfied with that, then at the council table, we proceed basically as as we already do. And when the regrets are given, it's implicit that that council accepts the absence. I don't, I don't know how others would feel about that. Councillor Budrick?
I'm on the same page as that, but a little bit more on on the mayor on that one. He just, he just comes forward with regrets. I don't think it's anyone else's business to know why someone may not be there that evening, but yeah. I'm I'm on board with that.
And and that's, that's part of the rationale why I gave for him to be the gatekeeper of that, because, yeah, I understand that point. Councillor Willis?
I recall being a member of the public when this was introduced, this policy, and it was pre-pandemic, pre-Zoom meetings. And it was, it was in response to public perception that there were members of council that were missing a lot of meetings. And and I think that we have a responsibility to have some sort of a mechanism for the head of council to address that if it becomes a problem.
Yep, councillor Proderick?
In my previous career, I think like everybody, I think there's a consensus here that you know, the mayor or his designate, maybe depending on the situation, has the ability just to, as you said, councillor X has sent the regrets and maybe even, you know, and I don't know, that's enough. For me, that's enough. And again, it's like councillor Willis said, the public perception.
I was just going back to, I agree with with you that we can take out all the things that staff might have, like vacation and everything. We don't. That's not what we're here for. It would be more bereavement, you know, special circumstances that may justify missing a council meeting for the well-being of the council member and the family members.
So I think, Ms. Wood, I think there's consensus to keep keep the policy as it is, that it has some some technical teeth. But in terms of exemptions, in terms of the exemption of the absences by council, that the process is I kind of described, that the mayor the mayor essentially determine those absences. Does the C A O have an intervention?
It's not just really intervention, but I'm a little aware, you know, kind of be aware of councillors calling in saying, I'm sick, I can't come. And then we're leaving it on the mayor to sort of say, yeah, really? And that like, there's no, I don't want to necessarily put that obligation on the mayor for how of of how to justify it. You know, I wasn't here when this was introduced and, you know, in terms of trying to solve an issue. But perhaps we could look at whether council gets paid by meeting attendance. And then there's not any discretion in terms of if you're at the meeting, you get paid. And if you're not at a meeting, you don't get paid. As opposed to a discretion of when the not, like whether you have an excuse for why you're not at a meeting or not. I I just, I just.
I know that consensus. Thank you, C A O.
I'm happy. I just, I I'm just, I guess, wanting to say that I just want to make sure that the mayor is comfortable with like having the, to be the one to make that decision. And as as an employer, we have all people may have entitlements and I I'm sick, I have an appointment, I go and and there's not a lot of inquiry following that.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just name out loud too. Part of, part of the challenge is, is that in an ordinary employment situation, there is a direct accountability and all of us here are accountable only to the public. So it's a bit challenging.
Just to muddy the waters. Actually, when this, when this was presented to be included in the policy, what I actually presented was exactly what the C A O just said. I talked to some other municipalities that had incorporated it and they said there were a couple of ways that they did it. You, you know, you got your per diem or you got your, your your salary. And if you missed one, it was taken away. Or there was, there was one that I talked to and it was like, if you attended the meeting and you were on the attendee list, you in the minutes, then you got paid. And in one way, I thought that was a good way of doing it because it was just upfront. I guess probably the bigger discussion right now is do we want to entertain the idea that there are reasons for missing a meeting? And I would hope that if we, if we, I'm okay either way at this point. I'm just thinking it through as the C A O is talking and that, that's why I keep going back to. The reasons for missing have to be very well defined. Because yes, you can say you're sick, but I mean, even on the job site. Because yes, you can say you're sick, but I mean, even on the job site, you only get so many sickings. So if you're unable to work for an extended period because you're ill, you know, you are expected to be at work. And that, to me, this is, this is part of my work. So I would like to see it very clearly that, you know, are very definite things, and some of them were mentioned, like bereavement and maternity and things like that. And not if. And I guess, I'm not, as, as mayor, I'm not going to start asking council members, how sick are you? Like, for one thing, I think there's legislation that says that I have to be careful what I ask in questioning. So we have to also take that into account as well.
Counsel Willis?
I don't disagree with the line of thought. And I do remember a quote that came up last time this was debated by council that, that I'm not going to repeat. But attending meetings is, is critically important in the jobs that we do because it's where we set policy. So attending meetings is important. We do other work during the week. And I, I'm just envisioning a Tuesday night where a counselor is unwell and unable to even get on Zoom. But they do other work during the week. They're going to, you know, Kataraki Conservation or attending a town hall, you know. So I, I just, I'm, as always, trying to think of unintended consequences of this. And, and, you know, whether we're solving a problem that we still have or if we could just have language that allows council to revisit it if it becomes a problem, I don't know.
Well, I think philosophically, there's two different models that we're proposing, a progressive one and a punitive one, I think. I think what the mayor is suggesting is more or less progressive in that, you know, people are paid if they come to meetings. The, as it exist, as it is in the existing policy, it's punitive that you miss a certain amount of meetings, you get, you get docked.
Could we still have some leeway for the two meetings a year, understanding that life happens? You know, people, people do leave the country, whatever. And just, you know, leave in that beyond two meetings, you start getting docked and do it that way?
Yeah, my, my thoughts are with that. I, I kind of see it from an administrative point of view, that kind of, you know, personal days would be the way to look at this. Because again, you know, you don't want anybody having to, you know, probe why someone is, you know, using those absences. But I think a certain amount, as, as Counsel Broderick said, whatever you set that amount at, two, three, whatever, that a certain amount of, of day, I mean, absences happen, for sure. Counsel Broderick?
Just to throw another curve ball here. So, I'm sorry, it is the committee of the whole. We pay members of the public to come to certain committees. And if they don't show up, they don't get paid, correct? And I do like the, just, you know, I know you're a language guy. So I do like the language of progressive versus punitive. Because, you know, whether that number is 200 and whatever or half that, because, you know, you're still getting paid for being out in the community, doing whatever. But maybe the, you know, your 24 meetings a year, you get X dollars. After the second one, you, you don't get paid for it. You know, because, yeah, life gets in the way. It always seems to get away on Tuesdays, right? Just for me anyways.
So are you sure?
Okay, you go, yep, you go and then I'll.
Okay. Then we can look at some of the comparators as well and see what the other comparator municipalities do and bring that information. You know, on Counselor Prodrick's observation or comment, you could, as an option, you know, there's, I believe the C A O just said 22 regular meetings per year. And then, you know, there's the special meetings and whatever other meetings get called. You could look at something as an option that after a certain threshold, then it would be, no matter what the rationale is. So it doesn't have to keep being a gatekeeper of excused absences or not. You get so many absences per year and then that's it. Out of the meetings that you're, you're required to attend, that could be an option as well. So that it's one would be, you know, not as much administration to why are you not coming? Sort of those conversations as opposed to just keeping administratively who's attended or not, or how many they've missed in the course of the year. Yeah, but we will look at options. You've discussed some, some options here that we can look at and bring back for consideration.
Is that satisfactory to the committee? I think, yeah, I think we probably want to see some concrete options and then kind of go from there. Okay, good discussion. Okay, means. So the next one, the very bottom one on page two, remuneration. So confirm intent, confirm intent is that council, remuneration pays for attendance at all meetings of council committees or boards, whether regular or special meetings. And then. Oh, yes, the contradiction with the special meetings. So, yeah, basically confirming the intent of what, what full or half day per diems apply to. Mr. Mayor?
And I'm, I'm maybe the only one left on council when this came up. So I'll just share a little history to clarify that. The thought process was if someone is on council and they get paid like per, per hour or anything like that, if they have to take time off work to be able to attend a special meeting, regular meetings are always scheduled. We know when they are, we plan our life accordingly. Special meetings that are called, if they were within what would be considered the workday, so be sort of, I mean, between eight and five or eight thirty and five or something like that, then there was the ability for members to claim the per diem to attend. Because if they had to book, and I, I mean, I'm going back to when I was on construction. If I had to book off to attend a meeting, I could be working in Smith Falls. I might have to book off three hours to get here by four thirty, you know, or two hours, depending on what my day was. They should be able to be reimbursed for that. That, that was, that's why there's the contradiction. And that's why the special meeting was singled out under this, under the per diems. They kind of conflicted. And at the time, it did make sense. And I, I guess with all of these, I still look at, we're not necessarily looking at what, what we would be able to do. We're looking at what potential counselors would be able to do. And we don't, again, we don't want anyone to be excluded because they work till five o'clock. And if they leave at three thirty to make, or three o'clock or four o'clock to make it to an early meeting, they get docked pay.
Thank you for that context, Mr. Mayor. So what, what does the committee think, you know, in terms of per diem for special meetings? Counsel Willis?
I don't really see a need to change what's here, other than the five o'clock is a concern because we have in this council moved to coming in early if we're doing a closed session. And so I wouldn't want a half day per diem to kick in because we started a closed session at four o'clock.
Yeah, good point. Mr. Mayor?
That precisely was the intent when this was done. Because if somebody works on, if, again, if I was on the construction site, well, when I worked construction, I was there till about nine at night. But if you, if you're average, if you're, if you were paid to be at work till five, then you'd have to leave work early to be able to make it here. And that was precisely the intent for doing this is so that you lose your pay in one place and you were made whole in another.
But I think to Counsel Willis's point, and that means now with the way we have closed session, if we have a closed session at five or before, that a member of council can apply for the per diem for that. Right? It said, because it isn't, is it written? And I don't think it is written that way, is it?
So the closed sessions that occur prior to a regular meeting, they're not special closed sessions. Those are regular closed sessions. And under our procedural bylaw, it states that closed session cannot start any earlier than four thirty unless it's approved by council. So regular closed sessions can begin at four thirty.
Right, I appreciate that point. But the point is a counselor getting paid when they're coming in at four thirty. Only, right, I know. But that's what I'm, I'm opening up for discussion is what, like, if, to, to the mayor's point, if, if you're, if you're remunerating somebody for coming into a special meeting because it's before five and we already do that for a closed session, you know, like. I'm, I'm just making sure we're all clear on exactly what we want. Counsel Budrick?
To keep it consistent, you could just stay with four thirty as that timeframe. And anything before that may be called special, but.
Clark, and then I'll go to Counsel Willis.
I think we could take back, if, if you provide some comments, we can take this back. But the definition of a closed meeting, or sorry, a special meeting is when a meeting is called for a specific purpose, for emergency or urgency. And it doesn't depend on the time or the date. So setting a criteria that special meetings before four thirty does not really work because a, a special meeting can happen at any time, even on a weekend, if, if that's what's required.
Yeah, I just add a little more context. At the time that this was done, it was in a period where council was meeting quite frequently with special meetings because we had some projects that were very fluid. And so that's what kind of brought it forward is we did have council members that were losing a fair bit of pay because we had to have a decision before five o'clock kind of thing, because that's how fluid it was. And so it was impacting council. I guess the other thing is, I mean, I, I did speak in favor of it. But we can look at it with the number of special meetings that we actually call and that we call before five o'clock is very rare now. Is it something that we need anymore? Probably not until another big project comes up that's extremely fluid. But even, even when we have had that since I've been chairing meetings, I can only think of maybe three special meetings that we called at very odd hours. And again, that was because there were levels of government that needed answers and they needed answers that day.
To you?
I, I think we understand, this comes back to, I guess, one of the earlier lines was that the council's getting compensated an amount of money, which is, is to include all regular meetings that you can schedule your life around and special meetings. Notwithstanding, and this, this kind of goes with, I guess, the next line you have to talk about, if it's outside evening, sort of those time periods, those special meetings, I can think budget, right? We start sometimes budget a whole day meeting or two o'clock in the afternoon. If it's a whole day meeting, then the full day per diem would, would apply. And if it's a half a day budget meeting, then you do, are entitled to the half a day per diem. So I, I think, if I'm hearing council correct, is that it does apply. So notwithstanding that your compensation pays you for regular and special meeting, if it's going to be during a regular business day, that you would be entitled to those per diems based on the time, the timing of it. It's not going to happen very often, but I, but I do agree that council should get compensated for those. And then that's going to take us into the next pieces, you know, what, what is council compensated for? If you're, you're compensated for meeting, are you being compensated for every kind of meeting, including meeting with ratepayers and developers and others, which is one of the next sections to talk about? So I think we understand that. I think it does apply. I think it makes sense and we'll bring back that for council.
Counsel Broderick?
I would agree with all that. And I think the rarity of them during the day, like the mayor was saying, I think, I can't, I might, I think maybe two and, you know, and the budget thing, we, we know that's coming. It's not like, you know, you've called a meeting with whatever number of hours notice, we know now. So I think that's, you know, I, I'm not too worried about it myself.
Are you interested? There are comment, Counsel Willis?
I appreciate where Counselor Prodrick's going with it. But I, you know, as the mayor said earlier, let's imagine that we're an hourly employee working for an employer where we do not get paid our hourly wage if we're not there. Because we're making decisions for future counselors. We have the ability to decide if we're going to submit for a per diem or not. If, if I'm not out money, I'm not going to submit. That's, that's each counselor's decision, but I, I just don't want to make a decision for the future.
And I think that's the consensus that the C A O described. Yeah, Ms. Wood?
Yeah, we were just going to provide almost the same clarity that Counselor Willis is that this isn't an automatic, you know, because you're here, the onus is on the council member to put in the claim for the per diem. So whether they choose to or not will be up to them.
Okay, good. There's consensus there. Okay, so the per diem allowance. So basically defining a half day versus a full day. Want to just clarify the recommendation perhaps, or like, because you've got here four hours or less?
Yeah, it, it just makes it very clear what a full and half day is, if you, if you quantify it by hours. So, you know, a half day for me might, if, you know, you might think it's a seven hour workday or an eight, like what is the hours that quantify a half day or a full day? And then that is how the per diem would be applied. Just seeking feedback if four hours is, is the right number.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what I've been using all along, I think is reasonable.
And you got consensus there. Okay. Oh, this is you and me, Mr. Mayor. Hey, well, staff did that on the report. Sure. Yeah, sure. And, and, yeah, you go ahead.
So just for the context, as, as was mentioned, the deputy and I, this really only goes to the deputy and I because we're the only two that sit on county council. I went back and took a look. It's a difference of seven dollars a day. I have never claimed that extra seven dollars. I forgot it existed. To be honest, the county and the townships pretty much stay close enough together that I don't think there's a huge impact here, one way or the other. If I go to a conference and I'm on the counties, doing it through the county and representing the county, I take what the county pays. That's why I'm working for that day.
Ms. Wood?
So does council want to keep a statement in here about that? And any administration that goes with that? Or is it, if you're on county council, you get paid by county council and there is no reconciliation?
I'm, I'm happy to, to leave the reconciliation as it is for the logic that Counselor Willis gave for the previous discussion, to not bind other counselors' hands. If, if that seven bucks means something to somebody, they should be able to apply for it. I'm just, I think, to the mayor's point, in practice, neither he nor I do that, but.
Yeah, yeah, again, similar to the last statement, it is on, the onus is on the member to put in that claim. So again, if they don't, if they choose not to, then it doesn't get administered.
I was a pro, and I would say I doubt either one of you would even waste the time to do a seven dollar paperwork.
I can confirm that. I can confirm that. Um, okay, so then we come to, oh, yes, Ms. Wood.
Can we go back to the previous section? There is a section there that we'd like to seek some clarity on under the per diem, uh, the discussion we were having about, you know, when do you get paid for an extra meeting? There's a statement in there about, um, when the mayor or C A O deem that the attendance of one or more elected officials is required at a meeting. Um, that takes place within or outside municipal boundaries, is held entirely or partly during normal working hours, is not convened as a special meeting of council under the terms of the procedural bylaw. So this is like meeting with developers, meeting with ratepayers, meeting with, you know, that the mayor or the C A O asks counselors to be involved in. What is, yeah, like, what is councils or committees thoughts on that section of the per diems being applied? Or what are the parameters you're, you would like to see there or the clarity you can provide for the policy?
Counselor Willis?
I think the key word in this is required. If the mayor requires someone to attend a full day meeting, then I think that we should leave that in there because of the same thing. A person could be giving up a day's pay or the opportunity to earn money.
Good. Okay, good. Apologies for that. Yes, I did miss that. Uh, okay, benefits remuneration. Do you want to just kind of do a little intro about this, Ms. Wood? That would be helpful.
So currently there is, uh, benefits provided as per the policy that, um, are optional for council. Uh, any council member to, um, have the, the life insurance, uh, is a standard one that is provided. Um, but the, uh, benefits for health and dental or the benefit package as well as the R S Ps are optional. Um, and through the compensation survey and the feedback there, staff was asked to look at other alternatives um, that could possibly be provided to council to compensate for a benefits package. Um, what's outlined here is some alternatives that could be considered, one being, uh, status quo. Uh, then, uh, health, a health spending account, um, which is outlined in the report as it, it gives more freedom for what you can use the funds for. It's also could be seen as a top up to any sort of plan that you already may have through another source or a, a spouse or a family member. Um, and it, uh, it allows you to put in, um, expenses as, as they're claimed and there's no like limits to, you know, you, you can only get one dental or you can only get a hundred dollars worth of massage. You could use it for whatever those allowable expenses are. Um, so that is one of the options with the healthcare spending account. The other one is don't provide benefits, but provide some sort of, uh, percentage in lieu of the benefits to compensate that there is no formal benefits being provided to the council member. So, you know, the, the example given in the report was fifteen percent in lieu of benefits. Um, and that would just be a bi-weekly pay addition to, to the counselor's pay. Um, and there would be no benefit package then provided, uh, to council. It would just be, uh, in, in lieu of that. Yeah, the, one of the reasons it, it came up was it is optional. So not everyone opts into them for various reasons. Um, and so if you look at a total compensation of a council member, it could be different from counselor to counselor, whether they choose to opt into the certain benefits or not. And so as, when, when you talk in H R, total compensation versus just salary, um, the total compensation would be different if, you know, Counselor Budrick took them and the mayor didn't. Because, you know, if you look at the costs, uh, the, you know, monthly, the six, sixty-six hundred annually for benefits, uh, approximately would not be included in the compensation if a member didn't opt into them.
Okay, so there's a couple of options to talk about, Counselor Prodrick. Just a question on the health spending account, would that be administered by the township? Like, how does that work?
It's administered through our benefits provider, so the claims would be similar to putting in a claim. It's administered through Sun Life, the, the same provider as our, our traditional benefits plan.
And, and just, uh, so the health spending account, it says with basic life and R S P. Is that all in one or would an H S A be one thing and then you could buy into the basic life just in the R S P?
The R S P would still be optional, um, like it is now. Basic life is one that everyone is enrolled in and then the healthcare spending account would be the option for benefits.
Counselor Willis?
I think the health spending account is a good option for somebody whose employer has a benefits program for them. You know, I know when I was elected, I didn't have a benefits program, so I was quite grateful to have it. I wouldn't want to make the unilateral decision that it's no option for benefits, just health spending. Because, you know, if someone has no benefits, catastrophic illness can be terrible. And, uh, but I, I, I see it as a way to even up, right? For, you know, counselors who are getting our, our benefits, but don't actually need them. Even though when you have a second benefit plan, you can top up the, the things that aren't covered.
Do you have a comment, Ms. Wood?
Yes, um, I, I would have to confirm with our benefits provider if we could have a mix with, like, council is a class of benefits under our plan. So I would have to confirm if there could, to Counselor Willis, um, be a mix of, you know, the traditional benefits, if someone wanted to opt into that or the healthcare spending account. Um, I'd have to confirm that as an option. I don't know that right now.
I would want, personally, I would want that confirmation because that would affect my decision one way or the other. Yeah. And then there's the other aspect, um, the, the amount in lieu. That's a whole other area. Yep, Mr. Mayor?
I'm not in agreement with it, in lieu. That's just my personal opinion. We get paid out of the tax dollars. All our benefits come out of the tax dollars. If, if I'm fortunate enough to have coverage at work, I see no reason to take money out of the budget for a benefit that I don't need. So, I see that, and I, I don't care if it's the his, the traditional way that we've got now. I see benefits to both the models. And I guess, I see it as a way that, we've already just gone back and discussed, if somebody misses a couple of meetings, they don't get paid. Well, one of the ways that they'll miss meetings is, is if they're ill and they can't afford the medication. So if we want people sitting up here making wise decisions, they have to be healthy. Same as employees, they have to be healthy to be able to do their job. So I see it that I'm in agreement, I wasn't at one time, but I am now. I, I've seen the light, I guess. I am in agreement with a health plan for counselors to make sure that we are making sure that we're doing everything we can for their health to be able to do their job. I do not believe in getting anything in lieu. If you're fortunate enough to already have it, I see no reason to be topped up with extra cash. And even, even after I eventually retire, I will have to pay out to keep my benefits. But it's still a good deal and I still don't see a reason to get topped up if I have the ability to be able to do that.
I agree with that as well because it also plays into if a member is getting single benefits versus family. I don't think that single person should get an extra paycheck because they're, they're getting a different benefit program.
Yep, Counselor Broderick?
I, I also look at that as almost a self-directed raise in a sense, but that's just me. I just wanted to ask a que- question and just, so the health spending versus the status quo. Is it fair to say the health, um, account, spending account, just gives you more flexibility on what you can do? Like, for instance, right now I'm sitting here with two thousand dollars for the dental work. And maybe there was something else that I had to pay to my pocket, which I did. So that might be a situation there where it's just more flexibility. And is that pretty well laid out in the, like, in that plan and be laid out just like we get the booklet that nobody ever reads and, and do all that stuff? So, is that a fair statement?
Yes, that is a fair statement. Anything, anything you can claim under a health spending account is an expense that's recognized through the C R A's medical expense tax credit list. So, whatever is qualified under there, you can claim under a healthcare spending account. Um, you know, to you, Counselor Prodrick, even if you had benefits through another plan and there was a health spending account here, if your benefits maxed out at a thousand for that dental, you could then claim the additional thousand in the healthcare spending account um, as, you know, and then you're, then you're whole from that perspective. So, it does give you flexibility, even if you already have benefits through another means.
So I think the, I think the fixed amount in lieu is not seeming to go anywhere. Um, but I think there is willingness to look at the health spending account. But I think to go back and see with, with Sun Life, with the provider, whether you can have both simultaneously for council. And then depending on what the result is, you can, we can come back. Counselor Willis?
I think too, to make a decision, we'd have to see what are the, the details of the benefits for Sun Life. As Counselor Prodrick says, nobody reads the book. You know, what are the caps? And, and just put ourselves in that position of somebody with a serious illness. Are we doing them a disservice by capping that because a health spending account of three thousand dollars goes away pretty quickly if you're having to pay for insulin or something like that? So, just understanding the decision we're making and whether it's the right one.
Ms. Wood?
And to clarify, the, the difference between the health spending account and the traditional benefit model that you currently can opt into is it's, if you have family, your benefits, you know, the traditional plan covers you, your spouse, any dependent that are qualified under the plan. And they each get their allotment. A healthcare spending account is total. So, your qualified dependents draw from that one amount. So, if it, whatever council determines, if we went healthcare spending kind of as three thousand, it's three thousand for everybody. Whereas the traditional plan, you can go to the dentist, your, your spouse can go to the dentist and you have all of those limits personally. So, you know, there is that to consider as well.
Yeah, thank you. Do you really know the? So you satisfied with the direction there, Ms. Wood? Excellent, okay. So we can move to vehicle allowance and mileage reimbursement. So everybody can see what's in the current policy, what's perhaps recommended. Everybody's reading it very intently. Do you have an initial comment, Mr. Mayor? Oh, okay, oh, Counselor Prodrick.
Of course I have a comment. I do like the ferry reimbursement. I'm just wondering something like this, again, you know, submitting a claim, da, da, da. For, for example, if somebody went to the, um, town hall, sorry, I was having a brain cramp there, town hall, that they, they would be able to pick up a ferry ticket maybe here instead of, you know, submitting a claim to get reimbursed type thing. Just seems it's an honorous task just to visit the town hall.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to staff on that question because current, currently, I mean, certainly for, for myself currently, that, that would be addressed with the purser. That's, that's sort of dealt with internally. Like, you wouldn't need to come here and pick up that ticket. You would tell the purser that you were on council business and that would be recorded. That's right. The purser's the guy that collects the money. Yeah, Ms. Wood?
Yes, uh, similar to what you just said, Mr. Chair, we could do that. There's an internal process that you could notify the staff member that you are taking it for council business. They record that and then it is billed to, um, the township. Uh, we would just need that clarity in the policy that that is allowable. Um, and if there's a cap or what the rationale would be for the ferry use.
Counselor Prodrick? Um, in the past, when I actually did go over to the island on official business, I gave the, one of my business cards, um, saying, you know, Boilis Township, Mike Budrick, Counselor, and that was the way they recorded it. So that'd be one way of doing it. So it's considered official. They've got acknowledgement of exactly who it was.
Yep, Counselor Willis?
So the process that the deputy mayor mentioned is also the process that's used by staff when township staff go to the island. So we're not asking for a different process. So really what you're looking for is just to say, follow that process. If you're council going to the island on business, not just to the beach.
Yes, that's the clarity we're seeking. Uh, it does apply to, uh, staff that way as well. Um, I guess the question would be, is it for all business? Are you going to make a cap at the number of trips that would be? I'm not sure if you want that clarity. Um, but we can put that consideration in the policy that they would follow the same process as staff. The other piece to that is the, um, the car, the, the mileage allowance piece, uh, where right now it was scaled back in the twenty twenty-five budget, but that is an automatic payment that is issued right now. So, seeking clarity on that as well, if that continues to be practiced.
I was going to get there, Ms. Wood, don't worry. Um, so just to close the loop on the ferry, I think the existing policy is good. I don't know if committee has any wish to put any caps on it. I mean, I, I, hitherto, I don't think it's been a huge issue. Mr. Mayor?
I don't think so. We're all, we're all big boys and girls here. Um, yeah. I mean, there's, there's months that I, depending on typically spring and fall, I might be on the island four or five times in a month. And then I may go for two or three months and not be over for a, for a function. I might go to the beach or do something, but go there for supper, but not on official business. Um, I think, uh, we can just leave it at that, that if it's official business, attending a, uh, a function, um, I don't know, we word it however, endorsed or supported by the township. And I mean, I, I'm, I'm sort of thinking like I'm going over on the weekend for, uh, the Dry Stone Festival. It's not a township event, but it's a township endorsed event. Like, so, little things like that. I think if we just kind of keep it like that, I think we should be good.
I couldn't for staff? Okay, so then there's the mileage piece. And just to repeat for clarity, those base mileage numbers are included in council's remuneration on a monthly basis. So, there's kind of, there's two things we can do here, I, I think. So there's, we can keep that existing model and then set the number at what that should be. Or you could move to a model where you claim your mileage on a monthly basis if you so desire. So those are kind of the two directions we could go. You want to get the ball rolling, Counselor Broderick?
Sure. Uh, I'm for the status quo, um, you know, uh, similar to the mayor, there's months where you might be driving all over the township or going to the island, whatever. And it, personally, I, I, I just find it would be easier for me because I'm terrible with paperwork and not administration, just putting it on paper.
Not education administration anyway. I think that's wrong. Counselor Willis?
Just for clarity, so the current policy reads that the mayor and the deputy mayor. Oh, sorry, never mind, reading again.
Yep, go ahead.
I think the intention during the budget discussion was to reduce what the non, like, beyond the mayor and the deputy mayor, was to reduce what council was drawing as a, as an allowance. And I, I don't think we should step back from that necessarily. And I, I don't think we should step back from that necessarily. I don't know that we're all driving 150 or 300 kilometers a month doing our council business.
Ms. Wood, you had a comment?
Yeah. So the recommendation would incorporate the direction that council gave in the budget process, which reduced the council members outside of the mayor and deputy mayor's allowance. So it was 300 and it's, they reduced it to the 150. And so that's what's in here as a possible recommendation to update the policy.
You're okay with that, Counselor Proderick?
I'm sort of staying silent. Sorry. I'm sort of staying silent on it just because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the council members. I mean, again, there's times that you attend a lot of events. There's other times that you don't. So I'm kind of looking. Because the only other way to do it would be to set a low number and then claim. But much to Counselor Proderick's comment already, as easy as it is, claiming's a pain. So I get that. The only other thing is we are taxed. When it's an allowance, we're not taxed if it's a claim. Those are the big differences. And I'm flexible either way. It's just.
Do you have a Counselor Proderick? And then I'll come to you.
I was just gonna say on the reduction for counselors to 150, that was my suggestion during budget. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yep, I knew it.
I, I was gonna echo that, that it was put in the budget, but I think it's make it policy, you know, so we don't have to every year go back to the budget. And I think anybody that follows council closely will realize we've made that, you know, it's not a great chunk of money, but at least it's a, it's a little step.
So I think the direction is to go exactly as it's presented in the recommendation. Okay. Office and technology provisions. So again, we can read what's in the existing policy and then what's recommended. Counselor Proderick?
I, I would go with the remove the monthly technology reimbursement as we did in the previous budget, just remove it. Because I think, I guess I'm only speaking for myself, but we all have our own personal devices and you know, our numbers are public. If people need to contact us and we do get an iPad, which was more than enough, I believe, to do our duties.
Agreed. Yep. That's, that's good. Okay. Conferences, correct? Counselor Willis?
Thank you. I disagree with this one. And I disagree. What we're doing is reducing counselors from being able to attend two conferences a year to one. And I've participated in the Roma Conference and I've participated in the AMO and never CFM, but I, I understand it's also a viable conference. And, and I, you know, I, I just got the, do you want to go to Roma? And I thought, oh, I knew this was coming. I've, I have found both conferences valuable with interesting stuff brought back to council. I think it's too much to limit it to one.
I mean, again, I think we did it for a particular year for budget constraints, but I think to that point, it's worth re-discussing. Counselor Proderick?
I'm just gonna make couple observations. I do agree with that. It was made for budgetary. And I would be interested to know, you know, I don't have to know who or what, but how many counselors didn't use in previous years? You know, like maybe it's one plus a floating number that people can apply to. Because I know there's counselors for various reasons, don't necessarily want to go to two, they might want to go to one. And yes, the FCM and all, all the conferences, you always pick up something and, and you know, I, I think maybe let's go back to either one plus or two or whatever, because I don't think everybody will take full advantage if it was two. It's just a observation.
Ms. Wood?
Yes, through you, Chair. We have no issues removing the one limit that was, as previously said, put in for some budget considerations. That's why it was brought forward. I guess where we would seek clarity from council is so we can budget appropriately for these conferences. What, what is the guideline for the number that can be attended? Or how we should budget for these things?
Counselor Proderick?
Through the chair, just for Ms. Wood. Do we have a comparison for this year, what our expenses were? Because we cut them to one in relation to what they were the previous year? Just because like Counselor Willis said, there are some people that don't always maybe go to two or sometimes don't even go to one. So just curious as to how much we actually cut it in that, in that whole process. That's all. If we come back with that, that would be great.
Yes, we can bring that information back.
Counselor Willis?
Just a comment too, I think for the, the budgeting discussion is what I observed in this council is the first year of council, it seemed like the participation was higher at the conferences and then it kind of waned. So maybe we don't have it as a flat item across four years, but understand that in the first year of a council, they'll probably all want to go to AMO and then it may change.
Counselor Proderick?
Also, I, I do know with the mayor and deputy mayor being on county, sometimes those, because you get with both, it may not actually come against our budget. It could, could go against the counties. So that's just another way of looking at that possibly that you could lean on the county budget a little more than the township budget.
Mr. Mayor?
If I could just speak to that typically for myself, and I know former mayors and deputy mayors have done this as well. Typically the first two, if we, if we go to two, both of them are to the county. If we go to the third one, then that would be on the township. That's typically the way it's been done. And I guess just to speak to the two, again, I'm looking at not necessarily this council where some of us are somewhat veterans. And so people could look at it and say, do you really need to go to another conference? Even though let's face it, the legislation is changing daily. We can, we do have to keep up. But the other thing is, is the new council, if we had three new people on it, just to throw it out there. When I came on council, I needed those conferences to be able to get up to speed and stay there and also to develop the camaraderie with other municipal leaders to be able, and I still do that. I go to AMO or Roma, I spend a lot of time with other counselors and other mayors, gleaning their expertise. And so I think the two is needed. And as far as budget, we can have a floating number like what was mentioned where the first year it's max and then we go from there. But I would hesitate cutting throughout the term too far because they are valuable and I would hate for us to run a negative on the budget just for the sake of trying to lower it during budget season. That's all.
Through you, Chair. Similar to Counselor Boudrick's request, we could, for budget purposes, use an average of, you know, the previous three years or whatever the, we look at and use that as a basis for the budget when we build those yearly.
Yeah. Anyway, I think there's, there's consensus to not have it at the hard cap of one. I think that's the important piece to take away. Okay, conferences or event meeting travel expenses. Mr. Mayor?
I'll make it simple. I agree with the recommendations.
Counselor Proderick? Counselor Willis? I'm looking to Counselor Proderick. Yeah, sound good? There you go. That was easy. Conference or event meeting, travel expenses further down. You're wanting a particular, you're wanting explicit to include alcohol in the list of expenses that are not eligible. I was gonna say that is, that is the practice. I'm hoping if there's anybody watching right now, I have never expensed a drink. But yes, to make it explicit. I don't, I'm sure there's no, yep. Mr. Mayor?
Agreed. Include it.
Yep, Counselor Proderick?
I, I just want to ask a question, just it's not there, but it has been the practice that we get permission or approval from council for out of province stuff. Is that sort of, is it in there? I missed it. Okay. My apologies.
Yes, Counselor Proderick, it's in the clause above the one that we're looking at. It speaks to, I think it's there somewhere. Registration for conferences or travel outside the province must be approved by council. Yep.
Okay, we're good on the no martinis on the tax dollar. And then we're on to the trip report piece. So recommending that, again, I guess more explicit language, the trip report submitted to the clerk and then reported on council's agenda. Don't think anybody's got any issue with that. No? Okay. Yep. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's the intent, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, oh, and then the review. The last piece. So suggesting that, again, we kind of stipulate that it be reviewed once per term. And that the, any, and that any of those changes would be effective for the next term. Mr. Mayor?
Agreed.
Everybody's happy with that rationale? Okay. So that takes us through and there is a recommendation at the beginning of the report with three clauses. Counselor Proderick?
I would recommend that the report from Human Resources dated September 23, 2025, amendments to the member of council remuneration expense policy received and that staff be directed to draft a new council remuneration expense policy, which provides considerations for the comments provided this committee, the whole meeting, and that the draft policy be brought to a future council meeting for final consideration.
So moved. Is there a second or Counselor Willis? Any further discussion on the motion? Call the question. All those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. And we come to financial securities policy. Over to you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. So I will give just a brief overview of the policy. I won't go into all the details. But a bit of the background on this is over the last number of years, we've received requests from developers to review our financial securities policy relating to the acceptance of bonds. Last year at about this time, staff brought forward a report to council to amend the policy as an interim measure, with this report being the follow-up to that. Since that time, the provincial government issued OREG 46124 on surety bonds, which provided the overriding process that we had to follow there. So since that OREG has been released, staff have been following the requirements of that regulation. And this policy update will bring us in line with those requirements. At the same time as that process has been going on, we received funding through the Housing Accelerator Fund to look at the overall policy, not just bonds more broadly in, in order to accelerate housing starts and, and aid in development clarity for what's required for securities. During this process, we've also taken the opportunity to look at our construction requirements for financial securities as a lot of the topics that we're discussing are, are shared amongst construction or development. So whether that's bonding, whether that's warranties or different processes like that, we're following very similar requirements. And so we wanted to look at those both in conjunction, so that way we can be similar when possible. So that's the process that's been followed. This draft policy was circulated with the development community and no significant comments were received on it. So now we've brought it here to committee of the whole for review and feedback.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. I'll turn to the committee. The general questions, first of all. For it? No? Okay. Not a question or comment? Okay. Well, you can make a comment. It is committee of the whole. We don't have to have a motion per se.
I, I think this is very good and I like that it provides savings to the developers. I'm just hoping that those savings get passed on to the people buying the homes.
Other comments on the policy or questions on the policy for staff? What are council, the committees wishes? Counselor Willis?
Move that one, the report from the Engineering and Environment Division dated September 23, 2025, refinance securities policy be received and that the development securities requirements policy dated November 2, 2009 be repealed and that the attached financial securities policy be adopted.
So moved, seconded by Mr. Mayor. Comment from the mover? Seconded. He did. Any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. And we come to adjournment of committee of the whole, Counselor Boudrick, seconded by Counselor Proderick. All those in favor, motion is carried. We are adjourned committee of the whole at 7:58.
Okay. So we're back into council meeting now. So the next item up is notice of motion. Are there any notices of motion to be presented this evening? Counselor Proderick?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would move that council direct staff to review the facility allocation policy in regards to ice time allotment to consider historical ice use, local ice user groups based in loyalist youth user groups needs and the changing needs based on population trends and that a revised policy to be brought to the committee of the whole for the meeting of January 13, 2026.
Thank you. Counselor Boudrick?
I was going to second his motions.
This is just, so we just receive it and then at the next meeting it will come work for, for a council decision? So we've received that. Thank you. Any other notices of motion to be presented this evening? Seeing none. Any direct motions to be received this, this evening? Seeing none. We have the consent agenda and as was mentioned when we adopted the agenda, there is one item added, 15.3, which is by law, two. there is one item added, 15.3, which is by law 2025-38, is that right? 58, can't read my own writing. And that's to appoint David Classy as the township treasurer. Are there any items that council wishes to extract this evening? If not, there, would someone like to make a motion to approve them all? Deputy Mayor Townen?
I move that all items in the consent agenda dated September 23, 2025 be approved as presented, that the necessary action be taken.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Willis? Any comments from the mover? Seconder? Other members? Call a question, all in favor? Motion is passed. Announcements, are there any announcements to be made this evening? From council? Counselor Willis?
I'm sure I'm stealing your thunder, so I'll let you add to it, but I had the, the privilege of attending the Golden Helmets performance, I guess you would call it, in Bath on the weekend, and I am not a motorcycle person, but it was fascinating, it was great to see people out, and I've never seen our mayor so thrilled to be the mayor of Loyalist Township as he was that day.
I will have to follow up, you're right. Being a rider, that was an amazing event to, to witness, and and also, yes, I just wish I was on one of those bikes at the time. The, the Golden Helmets were a great event, and the whole day was very good, it was a part of Culture Days. Staff did an amazing job along with the volunteers to be able to make a full day. And I know, well, from me down to the grand, youngest grandson, there was something for everyone and everyone enjoyed it, and we all stayed for the full length of time, and so it was a great day, and I wanted to put kudos out to all of the staff and the volunteers in our community that worked very hard and made it come to fruition, along with all the other entities that supported it, the, our fire department, the paramedics. The OPP also brought K-9, marine auxiliary, and I'm missing something, but I can't think of what it is, as soon as I start naming, I will. And there, there was a drone there too, you're right, so it was a very good day and yes. The motorcycles, I was, you couldn't wipe the grin off my face, could you? Are there any other announcements this evening? Saying none, confirmatory bylaw, do we have a mover? Counselor Proderick?
I would move that bylaw 2025-57 to confirm the proceedings of the council of Loyalist Township be enacted and passed, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign and seal.
So moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Motion is passed. And a motion to adjourn. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Townen? That the meeting now adjourn at 8:04, seconded by Counselor Boudrick. All in favor? Motion is passed, we are adjourned.